It is my understanding there will be a report issued by L A D O T and city departments that incorporates the ideas that were formed during the many working group sessions. I'll review this report and schedule meetings with the appropriate city staff to review the findings. Within the next thirty to forty-five days, I would like to conduct a field meeting on the Wilshire corridor of all interested parties to visualize the implementation of these recommendations. Wilshire's been an issue for Tom in this whole process and out of respect to him, we'll continue to do it today. But today, I'm going to take a lot of public comment and I'd like Misty, sorry for the last name from my pronunciation. Do you want staff first or would you like to hear from the community? Staff first? Okay, fine. Come on up, staff.
I'm right now.
And whilst staff comes up, she's sitting there, does the report, while you finish your questions, I'm going to ask staff to incorporate them and then come back too as well, so that we can get a real healthy dialogue.
This is item number one on special agenda, which is the C L A report relative to development and establishment of local food trucks. How do you know about this comment? This report provides the most recent status of work on the catering task force and group includes truck operators, businesses, county representatives, a lot of departments from the city, involves both council offices and county health department. Variety of issues were discussed, but the ones that earlier on was proposed in this committee in March, it can be broken down into city rules, quality, why the issues that we do have regulations either the city or the counties that are listed on page two and three of the report, and other issues that the city does not currently regulate through other existing ordinances or regulations. And the primary one in this category is the concentration of mobile food trucks on streets, as well as the disruptive presence in some residential areas that creates safety hazards and move your morals. Comment. As described in the report, city attorneys find that due to court actions overturned portions of eight hundred seventy-three which was dealing with the regulation of catering trucks, a completely written section is appropriate to address the public health safety issues created through the operation of the local food trucks. And on page three of the report, we listed the elements that the council may wish to consider in the vice municipal code. The most controversial, I'm sure you've heard of, on that is portable and the deals with the law, the one where we could talk to her while we're at law. And this really was in order to address the primary issue that was identified in council motion, which is the congregation of the trucks in locations. Let I return it to the city attorney, who also said this on that, as was the Brooklyn comment.
Okay, fine. I have a series of questions and I know Mr. Caress does and I'm sure Ms. Dahlachan will too, but could I please ask Terrence Powell, L A County Office of Public Health, city attorney staff, Drew Reel and Mike Nagel, would you all come up and let me throw my questions out? I know Mr. Caress has something, Mr. Dahlachan, and then we'll take public comment to react to this. Okay? And we will continue this item. Are there public health concerns caused by the congestion of mobile food trucks?
Yes.
If yes, what are they? Please provide specific concerns.
Well...
In your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Terrence Powell, Department of Public Health, Kansas City. The concerns are quite specific. The unorganized clustering of trucks, meaning a congregation of trucks that has no one in charge under the glue, may pose sanitation issues in terms of trash collection, responsibility of the venue, in this case, the streets, in terms of cleaning. And of course, provision of restrooms if necessary for the public's role in the area.
All right, let me go to this, the next question, which says, how can we broaden our enforcement capability on L A county laws such as the bathroom commission letter? Specifically, is there a way that our city enforcement offices, such as parking enforcement, L A P D offices and Bureau of Street Service, street use inspectors, can dual enforcement of this county law happen?
I'm not a attorney, but my opinion is that local cities cannot enforce health law. The county of Los Angeles is a delegate of the state and therefore acts on behalf of the state specifically.
My fourth question, does the L A County Office of Public Health and/or the L A U S D have a position on the recommendations to prohibit food trucks near schools?
My position on that, the county's position, is it's fairly specific. Illegal vending is endemic throughout Los Angeles County, according to the city of Los Angeles. And illegal vendors prey on students, particularly in areas around schools. It is virtually impossible to differentiate right now, illegal permitted truck or vendor from that of illegal vendor. I also believe that any sort of vending near schools may cause a safety risk to the children if they're not parked appropriately, where they don't have to cross streets, when they're not vending from the streets, and of course, food that may be served.
I appreciate that. Now, another question, as opposed to the suggested issue raised in the C L A report, I'd like the city attorney to report back, and I'd like her coming on this, to the committee on the possibility of restricting food trucks only in certain hotspot areas of the city where the concentration is out of control and where it can and has been documented that there are public safety concerns.
Deputy City Attorney Judith Reel, that is certainly something that we can more formally report back on. Just by way of establishing the legal parameters, however, the vehicle code allows the city to regulate the time, place, and manner of vending from vehicles for public safety. And there is a case, Brock Osbornes, the city of Anaheim, where the city of Anaheim attempted to ban mobile vending in their neighborhood. And a court struck that down as being more broad, saying, no, no, you're allowed to regulate time, place, and manner of vending for public safety, but you cannot ban it, for example, in all residential areas. So if what you're proposing is to ban it in selected targeted portions of residential areas because there's a public safety need that really couldn't be adequately addressed by other conscious and manner regulations, that's certainly something to look into.
Great. Okay, Mr. Caress. Is there someone from D O T here with... We have the great general manager here, I'm here. And here he comes. He has three trucks? Is that right?
Good afternoon. Here's the deputy general manager. And my concern is that when we started discussing this issue a number of months ago, I expressed concern that in my district, we have problems primarily in residential areas. And I was hoping this would get taken care of, but we're still getting a lot of complaints, particularly from the residents in the hottest spot in my district for this problem, which is Beverly Glen. What specific things has D O T done to address this? How many tickets have you given in the area, et cetera?
Thank you, councilmember. And obviously, there are, the D O T's role is to obviously regulate the parking laws in the city of Los Angeles. So the traffic officers within some residential areas are doing their best. As I guess you know, their numbers have shrunk, but basically, in the past, in February alone, we've issued about eighteen citations in the past twenty-two days. And in the past six months, it's over eighty citations that have been issued to both catering trucks, as well as the individuals that are blocking driveways that may be parking illegally. So we continue to monitor and patrol. I think the challenge there is when, this is not something like in a street where people have parked and are gone for an hour or two. Typically, they may be there for five minutes or longer, or sometimes they have people that are in the car and then a passenger may get out and try to conduct the business. So on the customer side, our policies obviously include if there's somebody in the vehicle, we warn them to please move, and that courtesy is given. And if they don't, then we issue a citation. Within the, again, the catering trucks, if there are specific safety hazards, if they are blocking visibility, if they are parking too close, or whatever legal means we have within the L A M C or the California vehicle code, our task forces are doing their best to make sure that those violations are captured.
And what are the sort of long-term plans to specifically address problems with residential violations in residential areas regarding this truck presence and commercial?
Well, I think, as mentioned, you know, we're looking at this comprehensively, councilmember, that you have to look at, you know, the overall impacts and then also work hand in hand with our attorneys, our partners, your city counties. So we obviously are looking at multiple types of solutions that could work in areas such as the commercial quarters as Wilshire, as well as residential areas such as Beverly Glen. It's not easy, I think, as we work, the legal needs of how to distinguish this vehicle from other vehicles. I think that's a challenge that we as a department have, because we challenge, we regulate vehicles at this point, and there is a distinction between a commercial vehicle and a non-commercial vehicle. But the business that they're conducting, you know, for a transportation, you know, we're giving parking tickets, we're not giving tickets for them not having a business license or not having the current health and code violations. So that's where I think, councilmember, Rosa Melo talked about a multi-agency of enforcement. We're one piece of that enforcement, which is again, parking regulations.
Yeah, I think because some of the folks have been getting away with this activity related to food service, we're starting to see more and more, but also related to sales from vehicles. So I did a motion about a month ago, but I know we still have a few weeks running out of the timetable to get back to committee. But I hope that as we do this, we also link up with that idea, we can do those kinds of enforcements at the same time.
Councilmember, if I might, again, it's Deputy City Attorney Judith Reel. I understand that Mr. Powell, according to Mr. Powell, the county is now, is going out to that, to the area in this district, and will be enforcing the county public requirements, in particular with respect to having to have bathrooms. So it's, there are different forms of enforcement that can be brought to this. And I do believe that the report did address motion with respect to non-food vending for vehicles. We have agreed that the C L A recommended hearings on that subject, because a lot of the public safety issues that were discussed in the C L A's report pertain to problems that appear to be posed primarily by food vending, trash, the lack of adequate bathrooms. And so I believe the C L A recommended that perhaps there be hearings held to develop a record, so that council can determine what public safety problem is caused by vending by non-food trucks, so that council can enact appropriate regulations tailored to that issue.
Right. Ms. Dahlachan.
Yeah. I was looking at the ten recommendations, and I think they're bringing us much closer to popularity, and I think that's a good thing. I'm troubled by, first of all, my staff was not invited, and I was invited to the task force meeting.
Wilshire held this task force meeting, it must have been part of it.
It was there, we didn't invite them.
And just, councilmember, because these task meetings are organized by council offices, you have to be very careful that we not have an appropriate violation or an, so there may have been some omission. You can't have representatives, for example, three council members offices at that meeting, because that becomes a...
My question, we're okayed so that every council office is part of this?
My complaint's that I don't have staff, and I'm not invited to the task force meetings. And somebody has to make a decision on this, and standard protocol. Now, we, I mean, it's incorrect that we could certainly figure out how to avoid that problem. But I'm offended, it's not the way to do business. Secondly, how many times did the task force meet? It says, in the report, it says several times. How much is several?
Well, I was going back further since August, and you were probably before...
No. Everybody's putting two fingers up now. There's some truth to this, two fingers.
Unless there are much business up there.
Like that? Zero. Yeah. That's my...
He was, you know, my staff.
We never got noticed, all I had was my opportunity.
It was my understanding that there were only two meetings, and the report gives the impression that there were many more. By saying several, I assume that there's at least three, maybe more. As I understand it, there were only two. And thirdly, did the task force vote on these recommendations?
No, we talked, we talked about them. No, we talked about them, but there was no voting by the task.
So I want to make it clear that while the report would be read, it gives the impression that the task force supports these recommendations, but in fact, they were never given the opportunity to vote on them. And in terms of having the opportunity to discuss them, it's my understanding that they were told about them, but there really was very little discussion at all. And again, I don't think that's the way to do business, I don't think that's the way to create laws for the people of Los Angeles. I want to say that. I only have two, I only have issues with two of the ten recommendations. I'm making a lot of assumptions here. I would like the task force to say up or down, or modify, or give us some recommendations directly, just the task force, not infiltrated by councilmembers or anything else, just, I want to hear what the people say that are interested in this. And the task force itself is very diverse, I'm proud of that. Having said that, there are two that cause me a little bit of problems, actually, that cause me two, a lot of problems. First, number three, prohibited sale of food within two blocks of a school. What's the definition of a block?
Typically, it's even from one inch, actually.
Typically, you mean there are exceptions?
No, the state vehicle code, this California vehicle code is clear on that, so, you know, we don't have it here or have to memorize it sort of, it's basically, it begins with a three...
I have to assume from your statement that all the enforcement officers might have a different interpretation of what I mean.
No, I believe we do a good job of explaining the city and our officers know this.
Wouldn't it be easier just to say feet? Wouldn't that make it clear to everybody?
Well, again, blocks within the city could range from two hundred feet to eight hundred feet, so there are differences. So I think if the law or the proposed ordinance is something like within a five hundred mile or five hundred feet, maybe it's, I'm sorry, five hundred, maybe it's...
You would get votes for that, but my point is that wouldn't it be easier to enforce if everybody would say five hundred feet?
I think, I think we have certain regulations that have certain feet, councilmember, and sometimes it is difficult, because that becomes a judgment. We don't give our officers hate measures, or they have to walk in or measure it. So yes, you have a good point, but what I'm saying is the other side of it is also challenged, to have an exact feet limit, to be able to say this is within that guideline. So again, this is all work in progress, this is something we're working with the...
Isn't it true that as a result of the discussions about medicinal marijuana, we actually know exactly what five hundred feet would be from every school?
Yes.
We have those maps already, do you have?
Yes.
So we can hand those maps out to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. What, what is it for ice cream jobs? Which I'm assuming is the same concept of why you want to limit them from being by schools? And I absolutely support limiting them from being close to schools.
We don't regulate ice cream, so I don't know the answer.
Oh, okay. City attorney?
Well, there's, there is a regulation on books, and it says five hundred feet with proper line of school, between seven thirty a.m. and four p.m. are regular school days.
I think it should be the same, because number one, there, we already have established legal, or established legal precedent for ice cream trucks. This would be consistent, we'd probably avoid a lot of liability if we do consistent with ice cream trucks.
And councilmember, everything you're saying is appropriate, and it is council's call to make decisions.
Yeah. I would move that we amend item number three to say five hundred feet from a school, which is approximately one block. Of course, there are different sizes of blocks, so typically, it's ten blocks per mile line, so I assume it was five hundred feet, I picked five hundred feet out of the air, but...
Do you have any...
I just had to guess, and the item trucks are, so I would move to be, amend this to say five hundred feet. With regard to number four, allow one local food truck to sell food, curbs, roadway block. Again, we run into, like, suppose it's a really long block, and people are really hungry. So I'm wondering if, I know the city of Santa Monica, they do it by feet, and it's thirty, a one truck for every thirty-five feet. So I don't know if there's a length that we could focus on rather than saying, you know, one truck per block.
Again, councilmember, the same analysis will apply, I think this is your, it's appropriately your decision to make. If you think that's an appropriate regulation, it's certainly something that my office would be going to amend, to measure the distance by feet.
Thank you very much. One of the concepts that the task force was asked to consider was the notion of synergy, the fact that there may be some areas of the city where food trucks and restaurants combined can create certain kinds of synergy that are beneficial to the city of Los Angeles. This requirement would kill that notion, and I wonder, did the task force even consider the synergy thing that they were directed to consider? Who can speak for the task force?
No. No.
We haven't got that far.
We haven't, it was never brought up.
Good idea, though, Richard.
It was a good idea when I brought it up the first time, but they didn't consider it, so...
Well, we'll have more task force meetings, this is enough decision-making today.
Okay, great. But actually, I would like to make a decision, I want to get this thing out of here. And I think we ought to focus on foot, like, how many feet rather than one block, because that's going to be very confusing. And I assume you could have some very short blocks where you get a bunch of traffic, and then you have very long blocks where you only get one, but that might be the best place to do it. So I don't, there's no perfect answers, and it would seem to me that, that maybe if you said fifty feet or something, that might, or if you're Santa Monica, it's even thirty-five feet, I don't work over there, I'd like to know. But I'm just thinking one block is a little confusing and might be interpreted differently by everybody, and really just cause a little mess, particularly for D O T enforcement officers. And even when, when people know they're violating parking rules, they give D O T help. I mean, so why, why do we want to create more problems for our enforcement officers as opposed to creating a very specific, I mean, they can walk off fifty feet if they think it's a violation.
Do you have more questions?
No, actually, with regards to all the other things, I think it's really good, it's a good report. Again, you know, I support democracy, and I want the task force to be a little more, I'd like to be a little more clear as to what the task force wants to see specifically as opposed to what is interpreted from the discussion, maybe a presentation as well. So other than that, I think we're moving, we're moving ahead very well, and very close, and I really want to get this done.
Me too. Okay, before Mr. Caress speaks, just know this again, this is a work in progress, and if there were two task force meetings, there should be more task force meetings. It should involve other council members and their staff, just as well as, as everybody else, so like, Richard said, a democracy, we believe in that in this committee. So whatever input we get, the discussions will come back into committee before any action will be taken, and it's still being timed out there for us to even consider work. So I appreciate your insight there. Mr. Caress.
Yeah, I was just going to say essentially the same thing. I think we, we really would need it put in two places before we move forward. One is the task force, and two is really councilmember LaVon, who's obviously done most or all of the work on the commercial side of this issue. So I think once both are present, I think we'll get this out of this committee and get control of this issue.
And I'd say to my colleagues, there are five of us on this committee, that there should be a couple more meetings where each council office is able to participate in at least one task force, if not more, so that when it comes back to us, there's a general feeling among my colleagues here that, you know, this is the right approach and the right direction. Or we'll raise some questions, and we'll ask the report back on. Okay? I thank everybody and the staff, but I'd like you to sit by and keep your pens ready, because as the public speaks, there might be some direct relationships to where we might want to take this forth. So, minute clock, and we're going to go through this one minute, and I'm going to ask, again, I apologize, is that Jeff? Jeff from Metis Neighborhood Council, come on up. Is that Patricia Lyon, the great lady from Westchester? Come on up. We have Stephen Box, come on up. We have Lorena Parker? Where are you? Miss Parker, come on up. And we're going to go boom, 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 keep going along. If you're in the middle of a sentence when the minute's up, obviously finish your sentence, okay? Let's just, let's start right there. Name for the record.
My name's Patricia Morrison Lyon, I am the owner of Westchester Watchworks on eighty-seventh street in Westchester. Happy, thank you, Lord, for listening. As you all are aware, Westchester has been a community that has had a lot of difficulty being successful as retail business district. We have a business improvement district, and we are an enterprise zone. We work very, very closely as a community, and over the last few months, we developed our own first Friday program. What's made it magical, and I'm going to frame out to you a different perspective, is food trucks. These are food trucks that are part of an association, they are supervised, we have a coin person, and we coin person on our street. There's a partnership with merchants and food trucks that sets a stellar standard. We are going into our fourth first Friday on Watchmore, and I invite you to attend this. And Bill will be there, and he's going to meet some of the locals that he hasn't met before, and I see a lot of familiar faces. What first Friday has helped us do with the food trucks from the Food Vendor Association is to drive people to the central business district. This is the areas outlined by Lotte Vera, Manchester, the airport, and Sepulveda Westway. We have created awareness, we have created community spirit, and we have brought commerce onto the street. Please support definition, but not elimination, of the food vendors.
Great, thank you for your comments, and I've heard nothing but a big buzz in Westchester that it's been the successful integration of brick and mortar and local people and so forth. Lorena?
Good afternoon, my name's Lorena Parker, representing the city business improvement districts. We have had several food trucks in our area, marked there for many, many months. And I wanted to just say here, say that I was in support of the C L A's recommendation to limit the food trucks to one or block, or five hundred feet, or a thousand feet, or however that might be defined in the future. And it's going to be a whole order for multiple safety reasons.
Yeah, there needs to be flexibility, because Westchester, on one hand, saying it's creating a whole sense of community and they're close to each other, and another location, they're not. So the city attorneys, obviously, we have to have a certain flexibility in how we... That's right, maybe we can do that, it allows that flexibility.
And I know how to, I know that there's a lot more work to be done on the whole food truck, and I know that this committee only represents one small aspect of it, but I don't want to do the small work that I do.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Sarah?
Stephen Box, I'm a city councilor of the Indian District Board. And I'm here because I'm shocked that in Los Angeles, we would encounter tremendous success and immediately say, well, my goodness, that needs a special permit. This is a very successful social phenomenon, and the first thing we need to do is watch over where we live and crush it, limit it. And we should be looking for opportunities to embrace it and support it, and find ways to get behind the success here. The city of L A goes out of its way to encourage UPS and FedEx, and they actually compete with the U S Postal Service, where they provide a vital service and they contribute to the robust economy of our communities. We support tour buses, taxi cabs, limousines, just folks in general are making deliveries for loading their cars. We look for opportunities to make things work and establish common ground. The notion that we would limit this success is absolutely the antithesis of what we should be doing in an economic crisis that we're experiencing. We should be looking for opportunities to put people who are, they're small businesses, we should be creating the same kind of make-one phone call and get all the help you need from the city of L A that filmmakers enjoy, for example. But instead, you still have to navigate a system that's getting more complicated. So I'd urge you to join me... that's getting more complicated. So I'd urge you to join me in supporting the mobile food vendors of Southern California.
Appreciate your comments. Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff Town, Venice Neighborhood Council. As you know, in the nearly three years since the first recording of food truck arrival at Abbot Kenny Boulevard, Venice has gone up the Black Bull without the 35 trucks on the street, plus the 12 private out there, reached its tipping point, and has finally begun conversations, discussions, positive discussions between the vendors and the merchants on Abbot Kenny in one of the more congested areas of food trucks. We've finally started to realize the positive benefits of positive dialogue. Understanding that the CLA's report today is an interim report, we can't keep it too intensive, I'd like to call attention to the Venice Neighborhood Council's recommendation number four. That new regulations should account for increased intensity use for the food service area and the public right of way, and also that new regulations should account for traffic and parking impacts by food truck payments. I suggest these considerations may go closer to the core issues than would blanket one truck or two truck per roadway block restriction. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Thank you all four, Mary Patterson, Kent Smith, Leah Ross, and Marco Zucco. Oh, God, I did it again. You got a laugh on you. Okay, you must be Kent?
Yes.
Okay, you're up first.
Thank you. My name is Kent Smith. I'm the executive director of the L.A. Food District BID. I'm also representing the consortium, which represents 34 bids in L.A. We're not close to food trucks. They work great when they work with the merchants, but they don't work so well when they don't, and there's no regulations to require them to do that. The recent congregation of food trucks has created public safety concerns throughout L.A. These mobile vendors attract an increasing number of customers through Twitter and Facebook. They create traffic congestion, significant parking concerns, especially when they congregate on one block. Unlike any other business, they don't have to provide customer parking. We also note that food trucks, customers must use the sidewalk to buy food, but unlike any other business, they have no responsibility to keep sidewalks clean and safe. And when they congregate on one block, pedestrian safety is compromised. We need to do something that controls. Thank you.
Kent, I appreciate your comments. Good afternoon.
Hi, thank you for your ongoing attention.
Your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Leah Ross. I represent the border road trucking restaurants, and I just want to thank you for your attention to the food truck culture in Los Angeles. We're proud to be on the food truck task force and support a problem of food truck solving food truck issues. That being said, we are concerned with two of the proposed food truck ordinance elements. Number one, the proposal to allow one mobile food truck to sell per roadway block. The border road truck has one or two events per week that are invited and pre-arranged in conjunction with a couple partners that complement the food restaurant extensions, Cool House or Grump Cheese Truck. And we park on the same block. This regulation would greatly inhibit trucks from doing business in a way that builds community and allows food options in underserved areas. And this element, we don't know how it would be regulated, we can't imagine the conflict it would cause. Number two, prohibit the sale of food within two blocks from a school when children are present. Schools are huge fans of the border road truck, and we're often invited to provide food for fundraisers or special lunches, holiday fairs, and alumni events. And again, this regulation would be a clause to allow trucks in school areas when invited for special events.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure. I just want to ask you a question. You said that you work with another food truck company to do the events?
Well, I don't...
Because I just want to make it clear that what is contemplated is something that would allow for special events to override these rules.
Well, sometimes it's special events, sometimes it's a certain location that invites several trucks to come to a place. Say, for instance, they want a favorite food truck or two favorite food trucks, so it's the border road truck and the Grump Cheese Truck, but they also want desserts, and they invite Cool House and the same truck.
I just wanted to clarify that there is a thing that allows you to do special events. If there's a special event that, for example, a parade or something, as long as it permits a special event, there's more food trucks that can change the rules for that event. Secondly, would the, it's just a question, a rhetorical question, would the food standards include, is food trucks providing food outside of schools the standard of the school food? Just something to think about.
Right, yeah. I mean, competition for this kind of food, for sure.
Of course, they can go for it.
The times, yeah, health wise, yeah, definitely. The times we're being invited to special events, but...
Okay. I hope we'll see attorney for listening to that as well. Mary?
My name is Marco Zuzek. I am...
Oh, Marco.
I am owner of Canterbury Art Shop on 87th Street, Westchester. I'm here on behalf of the merchants of 87th Street, and we wish to express our whole hearted support of having food trucks come to our area, which we once have. It is organized, event, instance, but we have a coin person, and we work with the trucks. We have no issue with cleanliness. They're very good about coming in, and basically no trace camping when they're gone. You would never know that they have been there. We have found a fortunate track of synergy. It is a wonderful thing for us, it has drawn new blood to the shopping district. As small businesses, we have the ability to participate in things such as co-op advertising, which the truckers also participate in. So for us, it has been a win-win, and we would hate to see anything legislating that way go against what we've been working so hard to build.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Sir, your name for the record?
My name's Kevin Barrett, Councilor of the California Food and Food Vendors Association. And I attended the two task force meetings, and I agree with council member Alu Combs' statements regarding the task force. I think one of the key points is that the recommendations that have been provided in the CLA's report, not only were they not voted on, they weren't created to be the task force. They were presented to the task force, and there was some minor discussion about it, and then the report came out. So, task force clearly has more work to do. And one question I have towards the city attorney is, the city attorney was not present, and I don't know if that's, if there's a reason why that happened, but as far as the, our big concern is the allegation that a congregation of food trucks creates an increased negative impact on public safety. We haven't seen any evidence, reports, studies, anything like that, two food trucks within 100 feet of each other multiply or create any additional public safety concerns.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate all your comments. I have four more folks. Is Mary Patterson? Mary?
She had to leave.
She had to leave? Okay. Just tell her to call her retard, okay? Is this Hollywood Chamber? Yeah. Nicole? Is that the Hollywood Chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see. Okay. Matt Yeller, sit wherever you want to sit at this point. Okay, so we have two. How about David from the Westwood Neighborhood Council? David, say the last name.
Klein.
Okay. David Kleinman, Jay Sizemore. Is that you, Bert? Yeah, come on, see. Great, okay. So just start with you. Name for the record?
David Kleinman, Westwood Neighborhood Council. Thank you, everybody, for listening to these issues. Our basic concern is the resident community. We've got trucks parking in red zones, parking in the middle of the street, specifically between Woolshire and Sunset, El Grande Blaine, and inside the town. These trucks don't come for 15, 20 minutes to construction site and leave. They're there for four, five, six hours at a time. So we've got those issues. They've created a retail establishment on the street. There are too many trucks in one street. It's blocking all residents' drivers on and out, so that's traffic issue and safety issue. It's an ongoing problem. It's minimal enforcement by traffic DOT, which is a problem. What we're seeking is some kind of permission permit or restrictions to those who don't take into consideration these existing blocks.
Thank you. And of course, your council member, fellow area lives issues too, and you're just, thank you for coming up with this.
I'm a fellow chamber member of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I'm half the Hollywood Chamber. I'm here to support increased regulation of the mobile food truck industry to address a number of public safety issues as well as to help make the restaurant industry more competitive with food trucks in L.A. As we know, in recent months, we've seen a significant increase in mobile food vendors in Hollywood and areas throughout the city. Whereas these trucks used to concentrate on industrial areas where there was a lack of restaurant options, they have now moved into central Hollywood, parking adjacent to existing restaurants, taking up already scarce parking and causing a variety of public safety concerns. Additionally, because they do not have the same overhead costs, these mobile trucks can undercut the city's existing restaurants. They literally roll in, take the business, and attract dollars and... The Chamber believes that increased regulation and control of the mobile food vendors is what is being proposed, is a big first step in helping to address public safety concerns associated with food trucks, and helping the restaurant industry more competitive. We are especially supportive of making the congregation of trucks to one truck per block. Is the legislation in question being a best example of the urgency of the...
Okay, thank you for that. But I will always remember Westchester's influence of groups that makes sense for them, so we're going to have to be rather creative in how we put this document together.
Right.
Because I'm not going to insult Westchester that's having a joyous moment of the combination of it. So we have to be creative, but I appreciate your comments, sir. Yes, come on.
I'm Susan Rubin, Vice President of Homely West property owners association. We represent 1,100 homes. We've been asking for eight years for legislative relief with penalties to resolve the serious safety issues we have on our street. Parking tickets are just the cost of doing business to these trucks. We have people parking illegally. The residents take their life in their hands when they try to exit their driveways because they don't exceed oncoming traffic. Beverly Glen is very congested without canyon trucks, and there are multiple large, huge commercial vehicles that come where drivers have been parked in the center turning lane and block driveways to buy their food. We really need some relief from this legislative way. Susan Strick in 2005 told us that if without a petition from a resident, she would give tickets, and after the ticket, that she would take the licenses away from these trucks for a good, long period of time. They park in coverage parking zones. They park everywhere. They have no regard to the law.
Thank you for that. And, you know, there is difference areas of geography that where it might make sense, and other geography where it doesn't make sense, and I think you made that point very clear. Appreciate it. Sir, your name for the record?
My name's Matt Yeller. I'm the CEO of Southern California Food Vendors Association. At the last meeting, there was a lot of early school from planning about how food trucks create organic public space, and I think I was stealing, councilman, your phrase. So with that, that's part of the attractive nature of this emerging industry, and this one truck per block would kill this emerging industry. And not the impact of that, we would obviously shut her down throughout the industry, which is not just food trucks, but also people that supply the food, manufacturing of these trucks, thousands of jobs, hundreds, probably thousands of entrepreneurs would be affected by this one truck per block, which is restricted and has really, from what we assume, nothing to do with public safety. You know, I'll tell you that this emerging industry that's centered, that is centered here in Los Angeles, is spreading across the nation. And with that, it's also spreading, you know, one of our trucks, just a truck in Austin, it's a rental truck in New York. The manufacturer that goes on in Los Angeles, they're shipping those trucks all over the country. I just met with the D.C. City Council and the Denver City Council. They want to know that they can make their regulations more on our regulations to really just look at things from a public safety perspective and not a competition perspective. Appreciate that.
Appreciate all four of your comments. Now we have the Honorable Donald Keller. I call him honorable. He's now, he just had his next birthday, and he's with the Brentwood Homeowners Association. Michael Russell, come on up. Misty, coupled with the last two, Misty. Lincoln Hites. And this is Tracy from the Central City Association. Great.
Thank you. My name is Donald Keller. I'm president of Kent Giraffe in Brentwood for 52 years, and I'm the vice president and director of the Brentwood Homeowners Association of 3,700 single-family residences in Brentwood. And one of the things I'd like to have you make a motion, that I think is within your power, is to include the Brentwood homeowners portion under the category of the CLA's others as appropriate, because we never got noticed, and we represent all those homeowners. I have my card here to tell me who's given to you. But let me tell you about the safety problem of these food trucks from Kent Giraffe. They park immediately adjacent to residents' driveway. There is no space after the food truck, other than the Northbound, and on the other side is Southbound. Kent Giraffe hasn't been repaid in 60 years. The uneven service at Kent Giraffe moves cars into these food trucks and other vehicles. Until they repay Kent Giraffe...